We need to mute, and then we need to mute people. This place needs to be muted. Obviously, why is it not? Oh, there we go. We don't need to mute Jackie. We don't need to mute Jane. We need to mute her. Everybody's always... It's not. Since we are already muted, all right? Andy, you can mute. He's right there. Kathy, can you hear us? Kathy or Jackie, can you hear?
The sound is very faint.
Hmm, okay.
There's a lot of static and background noise.
I can hear you now. Well, we gotta go through and mute some of the open mics, and that'll hopefully clear it up. Mute all current. Why is it not muted? Muted all. Oh, that's muted. I see there's no camera. That's... See, this has got no muting capability. I'm muted. Kathy and Jackie and... Oh God, if Jane called in, that'll be a whole nother fiasco. You gotta find her number. God, grief. What a nightmare. All right. What does "fight" mean? How are you? How are you running here? This is crazy. That's good. How's it going?
Great. I just remember your busiest night there.
No.
No, we're done. We've been playing for it, but it was just...
It's good.
All the parking worked out.
That's good. Why is this thing so slow? All right, so now Jackie can hear us. You can hear us, Jackie?
If you speak up like that, I'll like a yes.
I will talk very loud. Okay, but you can hear us and no problems with that. Gotcha. Kathy, can you do the same?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. And Jane's here, apparently.
I am here.
Okay, well, why can't we not see her? Do you have your camera on, Jane, or not?
I can.
So there's a huge echo according to the chat. It just means you have an open mic somewhere. Oops, what happened to our... Just go back down Zoom. You should have two. There you go, and I'll click up to that. Okay. Well, I don't know what to do about the echo effect. Why does it keep doing that? All right, I'm giving this to you. That is, uh... And Jane, you can hear us?
I can. The echo is E. Yeah. Well done, guys. Given that we're now 0 for 2 on being able to use this new system, I do think we need an operator. Someone familiar with the system. It's complex enough that if we're really gonna use this, we need someone who knows what they're doing operating it.
So there are messages that when someone on Zoom speaks, there is a bit of echo. I don't know if there's any other setting that you can do. Apparently, maybe a mic issue from there.
Do you know where our remote mic is here? These are the cameras.
There's a suggestion to turn down the volume in SiO Hall. The volume of the speakers.
Done. Is that better? Does that make any difference?
Seems to.
Yeah, now I got some comments that it sounded good.
Okay. Okay, well, that... One small success. That's right. One giant leap for SiO Township. So do you want to... Oh, that's you will, not me. Should we call a meeting to order? At 7:25. Okay, well, sorry for the technical difficulties. We'll get better at this. So we're calling the meeting to order, and trustee Noel, I believe you are going to handle roll calls this evening. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, would you like to help us out by calling the roll? But first, I should point out that those of us who are present in SiO Township Hall need only say "present," and those who are participating remotely need to indicate from which part of the country you're participating. Please call a roll.
Okay, Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff to absent, Hertoe.
Present in Ames Storey County, Iowa.
Jerome.
Here.
Noel, present, SiO Township, Washington County. Vogel.
Present, SiO Township.
Okay, do we have quorum?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to make a couple of comments and changes or propose some changes to the agenda. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the technical problems we had getting started this evening. And also, I think there were some access problems for the meeting materials for some folks in the last, you know, 24 hours or so, and we're working on trying to figure out what, you know, was amiss and fix that for the future. And in terms of the agenda, I'd like to correct item H8, and I guess first of all, I should point out that in the consent agenda, there's a sort of... Things are not really in chronological order in that section of the agenda, but for item H8, which is the fireworks, I think, isn't it? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Six, I think it's H6.
Oh, I think mine are mislabeled. That's what I was referring to. Okay, so it's item H6, which is the fireworks. We need to correct that item because unfortunately, we included in the meeting packet the wrong application. It's actually an application for August 13th, and we included the prior application by accident. So what we're considering in the agenda this evening is the application for fireworks display on August 13th. And I would like to propose that we remove item H7, which is possible action to establish a township roads study committee. After consulting with several trustees, including trustee Noel, we're instead going to revise this and bring it back as kind of reconstitution of a roads committee rather than a study committee. So we'll try and bring that back for our next regular board meeting on the 27th. And I'd also like to add an agenda item to unfinished business. This would be I2, and this is a motion to approve a DDA project that was considered just yesterday at the DDA board meeting for the removal of directional signs from the Jackson Boulevard medians. Are there any other suggestions for changes to the agenda? Trustee Noel.
Well, I'd like to pull item H8, setting the four public hearings, from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda.
Oh, all right. So that would be under new business?
Yes.
All right. All right, we'll put that at the... Put that under new business. So item H8 also moved from the consent agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
So move.
Moved by Palmer.
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Hertoe?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
So is the agenda approved?
Yes.
And the next item is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from our June 22nd regular meeting. I don't think we actually, even though it says that we have the July 10th, I don't think we have the July 10th special meeting minutes yet. We do not. So are there any changes to the minutes of June 22nd?
I have some...
Trustee Jerome.
I'll raise my Zoom slash here hand. And just wanted to make... To clarify some of the notes in the minutes with regards to communications to the board of trustees.
Which page is this?
This is E, page 5. Flintoff noted large volume correspondence communications. The clerk will explore better ways presenting such volume in meeting packets. Under the public comment, the Lee Ann Phillips, nope, said that attending board meetings has revealed a troubling pattern of dishonesty, complicity. I think we should strike the troubling pattern and strike the subjective criteria of dishonesty, complicity, and manipulation. And strike that. Fine, with the next one. The other one, the last one, Mrs. Kim Phillips, nope. It should state to hold supervisor to account. We removed last... At our last meeting, we agreed that we were not going to identify trustees by their names, but rather by their roles. Then going down to public hearings, section 8. Mrs. Jillian Carey expressed doubt that the compensation commission would work and strike that the board of trustees does not want to work regardless of the system. Put that as a subjective opinion. It should not be part of the minutes. The... Oh, shoot, sorry. The East Delhi private road variance, public comments were great. And I only have one other one. I gotta find it right here. It mentions Nan thanked in a number of times. Do we know who Nan is? And was that captured? I'm not clear. Traditionally, obviously, has an individual, and it keeps saying... And it should read Nan thanked trustee Noel for her comments shared during that. And those are my... Those... Clarifying that, yes, Nan, and it's on K6. It's also on the closing minutes as well, as well as public comment. Yeah, the public comment closing minutes. So I would just ask for clarification on Nan. Hopefully, we can find that out. Perhaps she is an intendant this evening, and we can make that clarification. And those are my suggested changes to the minutes. So I would make a motion to approve with those amendments.
Trustee Noel.
I just wanna comment that we don't have rules in place right now dictating these comments from residents. And some of what you're commenting on is opinion, that residents were stating opinions. We may not agree with them, but I thought that right now, we were trying to capture the essence of what people were saying. So I'm concerned about... I mean, it may be a subjective opinion, but we don't have any directive that's not allowed, at least at this time.
I didn't think it... Well, if I could respond, my intent, I don't think changed any of the intent of the narrative. I just simply think it added clarification to some of the statements and a little bit more concise. But that's... As I'm only one individual, so... You need a support if you wanna move that and/or if anyone has any other comments.
Yes, is there any support for the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
As support.
So we have motion by Jerome, support by Palmer. I see a hand raised by trustee Vogel.
It was a hand in support.
Oh. Are there any other comments?
I'm just gonna say I'm gonna vote no just out of principle because I feel that it's still the prerogative of residents to state their opinions within reason, but these were all within reason.
I think it's not so much the statement of the opinions, it's the way that they're conveyed in the minutes that trustee Jerome was addressing. Are there any other comments? Please call the roll.
Okay, Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Hertoe?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, no. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we have communications to the board of trustees. Those are in the meeting packet. I do wanna point out, even though it is not on the agenda this evening, there are a lot of good materials to serve as a reference when we do bring back the matter of the private road variance on East Delhi. And so I wanna thank the resident who... Or residents who shared those materials with the board. And now we're at public comment. So this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any items on this agenda. Later throughout the meeting, the supervisor will ask for public comment following board of trustees discussion on each item on this agenda for possible action. You may comment now, or you may comment later after the item is discussed by the board, but only once on any one item. If you wish to comment on an issue that is not on the agenda, there is time for general public comments at the end of the meeting. And trustee Jerome, are there any members of the public?
So I will ask for your patience since I've never done this, and if you could raise your Zoom hand, I will look and allow individuals in to speak.
Of course, if you're present in person, you may simply just come up to the table to speak.
Do the people... So we have Mr. Greenberg, so I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, there is. Give me a minute. We have Paula on an iPhone.
I just wanna make a... I'm not sure if I'm allowed to be making a comment. I'm not clear on... It was on the motion just passed. I believe that First Amendment, people have the right in their comment to have a subjective opinion and have that subjective opinion recorded as long as it is decent.
On January 6th, the U.S. Capitol was breached by a pro-Trump mob hoping to stop the certification.
Thank you very much.
And you're an independent, so I would think that she would be supportive.
Oh, sorry about that, but thank you very much for that comment, Paula. We appreciate that. My apologies. Mr. David Reed? David?
Yes, this is David Reed, 713 Merlin Way. I just have a couple of comments. One is on the establishment of the SiO Roads Study Committee. Now, I know you've taken that off of the agenda for tonight, but in the charge to the study committee, it says that the supervisor will nominate the members of the study committee. Now, that historically has not been the case. Historically, anyone on the board has been able to nominate people to committees. I personally was nominated to the countywide initiative to create a countywide public safety organization back, I think that was in 2005. Trustee Nock nominated me to that committee. And I nominated Will Weber and Margaret Engel, and I think I might have even nominated Marty Mayo to the LPC in recent memory. So historically, the board has been allowed to nominate folks to committees, so it's not just the supervisor's job. And in the other action item, H8, the public hearings, which has been taken off the consent agenda, thank you trustee Noel for that. I believe historically, we have given people at least 30 days' notice of public hearings, and this would only be 28 days. It's only 28 days from now until August 10th. And more importantly, there's no information attached in the agenda, no costs, no proposals, no... No, nothing. I haven't heard any information back from Washington Engineering, and the only way I was able to get any cost analysis was that I contacted Cadillac Asphalt, Cadillac Paving myself about, I think, two months after we approved the engineering study. And I was able to get those costs within about a week after I contacted Cadillac, but we still don't have any information from Washington Engineering. So we here in Merlin Way have no idea what the final cost or the total cost will be. So I would request that we postpone the... Or put off the special hearing, the public hearing, until at least August 24th to give the residents at least a 30-day notice and also to give the Washington Engineering the ability to get the reports to us in a timely manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, no.
Hi there.
Okay.
Yeah, we had some trouble getting on the call and were... It sounds like some decisions were made about public comment that was made both by myself and my wife that we find deeply concerning and that seemed to go against our First Amendment rights. Our speaking of public comment is not objective. Our job is not to present factual information, though we did during our public comment. But we also provided information about our experience of what happened. And you're... As a township, it's not your job to determine what is considered subjective or not. That's actually subjective. And our comments should be recorded as they were given and should not be subject to anybody's interpretation of them because you don't like what was said or you don't like the way it was said. We didn't refer to anybody. We didn't call anybody names. We shared what our experience was, and we expect that our comments will be recorded accurately and thoroughly in the public record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is no further comments from the public.
And we have none here in the room. So moving on to reports.
Oh, excuse me, Will. I think I see Alice Owings' hand up.
Oh, oh yeah, I see more hands.
Okay, Alice. Okay, I see Alice.
The hands are standing up. I guess it's a little confusing.
They're all standing up, but... It's not allowing me to let Alice speak. There you are. Alice, can you hear us?
I can. Did you recognize me?
Yep, the floor is yours.
I'm just delighted to hear that folks are interested in having public comment accurately reflected in the minutes. Is there any chance we'll go back to January and include any of my comments on the budget or on the DDA or on the open meetings issues? Is there any chance that any of my comments will be included now, that the groundswell of support has shifted? And now we're moving towards wanting to include public comment in the minutes. Is that a new thing? I'm so sorry. I missed Saturday's meeting, so perhaps I wasn't aware of the groundswell of support now in utter clarity of people's comments. I believe my comments... I believe my comments generally were fact-based. I believe I gave very good examples. I believe I even wrote memos, you know, to various folks about that. So I'm delighted to hear this, and I would like to know, will we revisit past minutes then for, for clarity and to include all these factual comments? I'll look forward to hearing about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments in the public. Okay. So that brings us to reports. The first item is the Fire Chief's June Activity Report and Personnel Updates. Want to come up to the, to the table, or are you gonna?
I'm a little iffy on how this is going to work, but I think, I hope everyone can hear me at home, and I should have everybody remotely and in person able to see the report up on the screen. If that works, I'll go for it.
Are people participating remotely able to hear? Trustee, trustees, can you sort of give an indication? Can you hear the chief?
I can hear him.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you. So we look back at June 2021, four fires, 46 medical calls, and remainder of our calls for the month. We requested mutual aid, but one incident responded outside the community seven times. Major incidents, we had a battery of an electric scooter that failed within a business in the community. I have a little, as we talk about fire inspection, a little later in the meeting, there'll be some demo of that. I've got a video of what failed. But that was pretty interesting. Fortunately, that didn't extend past the individual scooter that had caught fire. It was a lithium ion battery, and it didn't damage the building. However, there were some other issues that you'll see a little bit later that we'll talk about. We assisted Ann Arbor City on a second alarm building fire. They had a fire downtown in Duckwork Restaurant. It traveled throughout the concealed ceiling spaces and caused some pretty significant damage. Response time data. Total response time, nine minutes and seven seconds. Our call processing time, under two minutes. We don't have any control over that, however, I would like to see that improved. And our alarm time to arrival, when we get the call, so we get on scene, seven minutes and 24 seconds. Forty-four percent of the time where they're under six minutes. Six minutes is our goal. Comparison of the year, 107 calls this month. And if we compare 2020 to 2021, you can see we're up about 21% calls year-to-date. In the last three years, this is our busiest June. Busiest sections of the township as of right now are the west section of the township. And I've also included a heat map so that you can see where primarily we respond to. The red areas are areas we respond to more, and less frequency are the light blue areas. With that report, I'll ask for any questions from the Board.
Are there any questions for the chief? Seeing none, I think we're...
We'll jump right into the next section for personnel updates.
Sure.
I had a few changes. One of our paid-on-call firefighters, Taylor Hanson, she's taken a full-time job with the city of Ann Arbor. She, throughout her time here, was dedicated, paid-on-call and part-time firefighter. She spends a lot of time in the station, staffing the stations and coming back. She's definitely going to be missed. And just in an interesting matter of timing, we're bringing on Alex Fuller as of about the first of this month. Alex is a firefighter EMT, is already trained with Ann Arbor Township, and he's looking to gain experience working with us, is on some of our calls and working shifts with our firefighters. Our Assistant Chief Doug Armstrong has completed training and obtained his certification as Fire Inspector One. This is the first of the three levels in the Fire Inspector Series, recognized by the state. And as of now, we are on a complaint-based fire inspection program. If we receive a complaint, we'll go out and investigate it, now that we have someone certified to do so. And throughout the course of our business, if firefighters are out in the community and notice something, we'll bring it back to address them as well. And one thing that I wanted to also discuss, we have 12-hour paid-on-call firefighter shifts. We're having a part-time fill-in. I think I've mentioned this to the Board a number of times. And we've budgeted enough to staff that paid-on-call shift for 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. However, we do have a lot of money available in that budget. And in order to really try to get to our fore-on-duty, which is the goal of where we need to be today, we started offering some of our full-time firefighters the opportunity to pick up some of those shifts after the paid-on-call had an opportunity. Budget-wise, the funds and the part-time salary will offset the increased expenditures for the full-time line item, and I don't see any budgetary issues with it. And again, that's to make sure we've got our four firefighters on duty. It's really critical when our firefighters pull up on scene with four on that end, and they can immediately go to work without waiting for mutually a company to come and meet our Mausia two-minute-to-after work. And if I can, try to stop sharing screen. I'd be happy to take any other questions from the Board.
Any questions from members of the Board, trustees? Trustee Cartel?
Just to thank you as always, Chief Hood. Just wondering, do you anticipate being able to hire new paid-on-call firefighters? It sounds like recruiting has been a challenge.
Recruiting is definitely a challenge. We've posted in the Township Newsletter, we've used social media, we've used word-of-mouth, we have firefighters that are in the training industry, and we're recruiting everywhere we can. I had a gentleman approach me today that is a certified firefighter that just moved into the community, and we're working to get him onboard right away. However, it is a challenge, and I figure we probably need about five more paid-on-call firefighters to be where we need to be. And I'm having trouble, my year here, I've found one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Next, we have our regular reports from trustees. First item is Galman. Noel?
Okay. There's not a lot to report, just one issue. The Court of Appeals had issued their recent opinion that Galman's claim of right to appeal and the motion for partial stay of proceedings pending appeal was dismissed for lack of jurisdiction. So this is good news for the intervenors. I was pleased to hear this. Basically, the Court of Appeals is saying that Galman doesn't have an automatic right to appeal. However, there are still some hurdles ahead, and they still have their application for leave to appeal, which is a discretionary appeal. The Court of Appeals will review some of the pleadings, some of the briefs, and make a decision based on the facts. We don't know. We haven't heard anything yet. Also, they have, Galman has the motion for partial stay of proceedings, which is attached to this application for leave to appeal. So those are the two outstanding appeals with the Court of Appeals. So the intervenors filed their stay motion response last week, and the application for leave to appeal is due this week. It hasn't been filed yet, so we haven't seen the actual document yet. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Supervisor's Report. I don't see a separate item for the Downtown Development Authority. The Downtown Development Authority Board met yesterday at noon and considered a bunch of projects, including the installation of bus shelters, which we hope to get started on very soon. There's five bus shelters. Kits for them are waiting to be installed at various locations where there are existing bus stops along Jackson Boulevard. There is a project underway to update the DDA's master plan. That will be the subject of meeting in September. If, if folks want to have input into that, stay tuned and participate in that process. And I believe that's it in terms of items to report. The Clerk, no report. That's what I have noted here. The Budget and Finance Committee, the next meeting is Wednesday, July 21st at 3:30. Treasurer's Report.
No report.
No report. Planning Commission, Trustee Cartel?
Thank you. So I submitted a written report for inclusion in the minutes, and I'll just briefly offer the highlights. The Planning Commission continues to work on pulling together a task force on environmental sustainability. We've received letters of interest or applications from a number of residents and will be aiming to select a group at the next meeting, the July 26th meeting. Wanted to thank our interns, Michelle Black and Katie Ports, for supporting this effort to launch the task force by compiling sustainability and climate action plans from neighboring communities and elsewhere in the state and country, and for developing presentations to engage other SIO volunteer commissions and staff. The master plan update. The comment period for neighboring communities is open through most of August, after which there will be public hearings. The piece, the Planning Commission has already, I have communicated to the Planning Commission the concerns voiced by residents over the need to clarify the table and map showing the township-wide road SAD and the neighborhood road SAD, so we will be addressing that. And also, I will communicate with them about the need to work with TAP to update the proposed pathway map. I think those are the key points. And then just on land preservation, Commission, no new updates at this time. The LPC will be meeting remotely this Thursday at 3:00, and will consider whether to return to in-person hybrid meetings, among other business.
Thank you. Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee, Trustee Vogel.
No update. The TAP meeting meets tomorrow.
Parks Advisory Board.
I will leave our update to the items that are up on the agenda here coming up very soon, this evening.
Okay, the Broadband Task Force.
We meet Thursday. No new updates.
All right, well, that's the end of reports. Brings us to the Consent Agenda, as amended. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Should we read the items?
Sorry? I'll move it.
Moved by Noel. This, yeah, just to clarify, this includes payment of the bills, action on a tax rate request for 2021 from the assessor, historic district application for Township Farm located at 7970 West Liberty Road, and setting a public hearing for July 27th on proposed changes to water and sewer ordinance. And I believe, oh, and I'm sorry, the Dexter Days fireworks permit application for August 13th, 2021. So it's been moved by Noel, and I'm sorry, moved to the second. Do we have a support? Support by Palmer. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Cartel?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Whoops, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so this brings us to unfinished business. First item is I-1. Is increase in authorized architect fee for the fire station renovation project. And we have with us Chief Hood.
Thank you, Board. Let me get some data up here for you. And I hope, oh, there we go. So when the Board originally began this fire station renovation project, they authorized Phase 1 and Phase 2 architectural fees. Phase 1 came first. They wanted to get going on the project. And as the architect gave an estimate of what he believed the project would cost, he came up with a fee of approximately $125,000. The Board authorized $125,000 and also authorized signing up a contract which included fees on a schedule. And you can see here, we've got the motion for the $125,000. And in their contract, fee schedule for Phase 1 of 8.25 of the construction cost and Phase 2, 8.75 of the construction cost. $5,000 was paid prior to any of this, so the total cost for Phase 1 of 154, 387. $5,000 is not included. It was paid previous. And the total balance for Phase 1 is 149,387.13. Since the Board authorized the 125, I'm back in front of you after we've got full total amounts, requesting the Board authorize the increase of 24,387.13. Funds are available for this in contingency. We have approximately $225,000 remaining in contingency on the project, $80,000 of that in Phase 1. And as we're wrapping, as we're getting closer to the end here, I don't see significant uses of contingency on unexpected things going forward.
Great. Are there any questions from members of, from the Board of Trustees?
What is the amount, the over? I'm sorry, my paper's down there. The amount you're asking for?
24,387.
Gotcha.
And I believe 17 cents.
Don't forget that.
That would, that would complete, that would complete the entirety of the Phase 1 and Phase 2. On Phase 2, architecture fees were about $3,000 ahead, and I don't have any anticipated additions to that.
And this is just based on the acceleration of costs?
Correct.
So they didn't do actually an additional scope?
There was one additional scope, $1,300, but that is not what this is related to. Yeah, this is simply, they looked at the project in the very beginning, thought it was going to cost 1.4 million. It's at 1.8 million. And their fee is a percentage base.
But they haven't actually done any more design services that would warrant it? It's just, you're just going off a straight fee base?
Correct, yep. The township authorized a contract with a fee-based schedule.
Are there? Oops, did we lose Trustee Vogel? Oh, there. Okay, there we go. I couldn't see you there. I wasn't sure if we'd lost you. Yeah, entirely. Are there any other questions for the chief? Is there a motion? Or does someone like to make the model motion, I should say? Trustee Vogel? So moved by Vogel, the motion would be, and is there a second? Support or? Support by Palmer. All right. So motion by Vogel, support by Palmer to increase the authorized fee to A3C Architects to $149,387.14 for Phase 1 station renovation construction drawings. Is that the correct motion? All right. Are there any further, are there comments from the public, I guess I should say? I do not see any. In that case, Trustee Noel, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Hathaway?
Yes. Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. The next item is item I-2. This was added, and I'll just briefly summarize. This is unfinished business because this was considered by the board before and sent back to the Downtown Development Authority to do some more investigation about comparative costs for repairing the signs along the Boulevard or their removal. The DDA did this, got quotes, and determined that the cost for repairing the signs was four or five times that of the cost for removing them. And obviously, repairing them would also lead to ongoing cost for maintenance, and the DDA proposed instead, after some consideration, to simply remove the signs at grade and have the materials hauled away for recycling. The total cost is, I believe, $4,750 for the removal of 40-plus signs from along the Boulevard. And that's the proposal before us. It's not, it's not a cost item for the board, it's a cost item for the DDA, but in order to take the action, the DDA is seeking the board's approval for them going forward with this action. Is there any, are there any questions?
Well, what was the exact amount again?
I believe it's $4,750 is the amount of the cost for the removal and disposal of the signs.
Do you have anything written?
Not, not in front of me. You mean, written to share, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I meant.
It's, it's a quote from Huron Signs, but it's a quote for the DDA. It's their, they, they took the action to approve it, they're seeking Board of Trustees' approval for them to go forward with the removal of the signs. Are there other questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Corto?
I understand that most people use GPS these days and may not use those signs. I personally have found them helpful. I'm just curious, like, what is the maintenance and the repainting needed, and how expensive would that be? What's the cost comparison?
The cost comparison, it was going to be an, an, a cost, an initial cost at this point, I think, of somewhere in excess of $20,000. And, and then, of course, you'd have to maintain them, which is part of the problem, the signs, some of them are still legible, readable, but others are, you know, you can't read anything on them, some of them are damaged and falling over. So their, their utility is, sort of varies. I guess some of them are still usable, but the determination by the DDA is that the, the value they have as directional devices or tools is sort of limited, and that they don't, the DDA prefers not to sort of, you know, sort of propose that they be maintained. Part of the problem is, if they were repaired, and then the maintenance of them would become a township cost because the DDA cannot expend funds on maintenance. So we could, we can approve the DDA going forward and removing them at the DDA's cost, but if we don't approve that, then the township is essentially taking on an additional cost item for the township. Are there other comments or questions from trustees? Are there comments from members of the public? Do not see any. Is there someone who would like to make the motion to approve the DDA going forward with removal of the signs? Some of them. Moved by Jerome? Support? Support by Vogel? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Oh, did you want to call for public comment?
I did.
We did, but there wasn't any, but let me just see their call. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess, well, I, I don't understand which signs you're talking about particularly.
Oh, oh.
The numbers. The numbers. For signs.
Are they the ones that are down at the Baker and Jackson where there's like a, like a board that has a bunch of signs? Or are you talking about the random signs on the Boulevard in the center? I just, clarification.
If you turn her off. There you go. Okay. I guess I'm getting an echo. Just to clarify, thank, thank you for your question. Just to clarify, that these are the sort of brown metal signs that have address numbers on them, sort of ranges of address numbers. They're located at the, the turnarounds on the, on the Boulevard. These were installed when the Boulevard was originally landscaped, and they've been sort of weathered over time, some of them more than others. But I guess there's, I didn't realize this, but there's a total of over 40 of them out there. All right. No other comments. So if there's no other comments, please call the roll.
Okay. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Thank you. This brings us to new business. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. In the discussion meeting yesterday, was anything talked about regarding the replacement or at least getting rid of the trees that had died or been knocked over?
There was no discussion, well, there was, there was some general discussion about the need to, you know, do more landscaping work, but there wasn't a specific discussion or agenda item on that, no.
That would be part of the landscaping, maybe?
Yeah.
Some of the trees need to be pruned up, which you can only do certain times, and some of them are just dead. Okay.
I think that actually the landscaping work is considered to be township responsibility, so that's something that we can talk to Steve Wogowski about.
Okay.
Moving on to new business, item J-1 is possible action authorization to contract with Digicom Global Inc. to provide a station alerting system for the fire station. You have lots of stuff on there.
I tried to get everything I could for you, because I look like a short man. And I'm starting to figure this part out as well. So early on in the fire station renovation project, one of the things we contemplated was an alerting system for when a call comes in. What we had previously was a fire pager hooked up to a bell throughout the station. That worked good back in the day, however, today we have a lot more modern technologies. So we, we really dug into finding companies that could do this, and unfortunately, we were only able to find two. Unfortunately, though, both had done work local to us, so we could go out and take a look at the work, as well as have both contractors come in, see our building, and give us a quote. We did have, as part of the project, some speaker wire run throughout the building. If you, if the board authorizes this tonight, we would remove that from Phoenix's contract, so the, the net cost for this would go down some, because we do have money budgeted for that already. However, both contractors want to run their own wire. So the two contracts before you, oops, that's not the right thing. And I'm not sure I can get to it.
Oh.
Two contractors able to do the work, Digicom Global, came in just under $22,000 for the project, 21,858.07. And our second bid was from CommSource, and that one came in at 65,149. Some of the difference here is CommSource doesn't run their own wire, so they had to hire a subcontractor to do it, so they quoted that as a sub. Additionally, all their equipment is proprietary and set up for a more sophisticated alerting system. This is one that would tie directly to our dispatch center, and it uses proprietary parts, proprietary software, and our dispatch center is not compatible with that. So that being said, the system quoted by Digicom runs off our current pager system that we're using today. All the parts are generic, off-the-shelf parts, so if we have something break in the system, they have them sitting in their truck, they don't have to special order a part or anything like that. So with that said, I'd recommend we go with Digicom, I've seen their system in place in Dexter, and they seem to be within the county leading getting all the bids right now as well. I know Superior just signed a contract with them as well. The system components that the pager ties in, there's speakers throughout the building, so when a call comes in, the firefighters can hear the call. Certain areas of the building will have a red light illuminate, so for example, the dorms at night, a red light will turn on, as well as the audible warning, so guys will be able to get up and get out of the building without flipping light switches and anything like that. This is, for a dispatch system, the most modern technology we could have been. With that, I'd offer, any questions the board may have?
Are there any questions from members of the Board of Trustees?
I do. Andy, can, can we come back to the?
Trustee Vogel?
Yeah, why don't we stop sharing screen if we can? So Chief Hood, this, this sounds very reasonable. Why is this a standalone contract, though? And why is it a standalone contract? And was this budgeted? Is it consistent with the budget?
Yeah, so the reason it was a standalone contract is we were, we were having difficulty finding contractors to even do the work when the project was taken off. We knew we were going to put one in, so we asked the, in the bidding process, we asked for them to put in generic components we knew we would need, hence the speaker wire. But then after we, you know, met with more of our neighbors and dug a little deeper, we found that we'd be able to remove that speaker wire cost that's already built into the contract because they all want them. Budget-wise, with the action you took tonight, we have 200,000 in contingency, we'd be at 188,000 remaining in contingency for the project. There'd still, there'd be a credit back for the speaker wire work that we would take out, 2,000, 3,000, maybe 5,000, I'm not sure. I have the contractor working on that figure for me. It'd be a net of, my guess is about 17,000 in contingency.
But this wasn't in the original budget for the fire station yet, going into contingency for this?
Correct. It was contemplated, but not, it wasn't included in the actual bidding of the project.
Okay. Are there other features anticipated like this?
The only other big ticket I see coming, I would love to finish our parking lot, but we've got a couple sections that are still asphalt. Asphalt's near the end of its lifetime. But again, when we get to the end, we can bring back that decision. I, I don't see any other big-ticket contingency fund things coming out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know why there's such a huge delta between CommSource and, I mean, obviously, I'm assuming you've gone back and done apples-to-apples?
I actually sent them a specification of what I wanted, down to what I wanted in each room and where controls were and everything like that. But I had the biggest thing, two items, proprietary software systems versus generic systems, and the second was, they're not able to install their own wire, and so they had to subcontract.
Subcontract, hop electric, I saw. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Members of the public, any comments? I do not see any. Okay. In that case, would someone like to make the model motion?
I think everyone's so shy tonight.
I don't know. Everyone's sort of waiting for everyone else. Trustee Vogel?
House Speaker.
Moved by Vogel, supported by Noel, to waive the bidding requirement of three bids due to a lack of vendors able to perform this work, and authorize Digicom Global Inc. to install a station alerting system at a cost of $21,858.07. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, chief. So next is, oh, we have another item for you. This is to start your show tonight, I guess. Overview of the need for a fire inspection program.
Once again, thank you, board. So a little bit earlier, we talked about, and I hope everyone's had a chance to read my memo that I sent out, we talked about a scooter fire that occurred in a business. And throughout our investigation, we take a look at videos that they may have to help us help determine where the, the origin and cause. And we're able to get a video for this. So you see here a warehouse within the community, and this business takes scooters off the street of Ann Arbor, charges them, services them, and puts them back on the street of Ann Arbor. So the, the business had gone home for the day, the folks had gone home, and you see they have a number of scooters charging throughout the building and a number ready to go out, and they do some work. Well, a gentleman actually happened to come back just a few minutes after this happened, and you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, the lithium ion battery of this scooter had melted down and failed. And, you know, we, we see accidental fires all the time, that's not a problem. The problem we have here is that the fire alarm system in this building never alerted us to a fire. You know, there's, there could be a number of reasons. It could be the wrong type of system for that, that building. I think also what helped the, the system to fail was it hadn't been maintained when we went out and took a look at it. We were not able to find any records that the alarm system had been maintained. Fortunately, this guy came back and he was able to determine what had happened, and he, he unplugged the scooter and, you know, the fire didn't spread. I think that's a, you know, something that we could correct. If we're out going in our businesses, we'll make sure they're certifying their systems and they work. Here's an incident we had sometime ago on a business on Jackson, this was last year, because I think, I can't quite see the date there, 8/13. But you can see there's a pretty substantial fire burning on the back of this building. And, and again, accidental fires happen, but one of the biggest things I see is that a fire inspector wouldn't allow people to store materials on the back of the building. This was a totally accidental fire again. And the business owner, they got alerted to this fire when the electric failed because the, the fire had burned into the electric box and shorted everything out. And you can see everybody come out, there are seven occupancies in this building. And, you know, there, there was a car that pulled up, they called 911 originally, but you can see folks coming out, calling 911, they're running back in. But here's the concerning part to me. In one second, you're going to see two people come out of the building. Neither one of them grabbed a fire extinguisher. Neither one of them grabbed a fire extinguisher because they didn't have fire extinguishers. One guy filled up a bucket with water and another guy grabs a bottle of drinking water, and they come out and try pouring it down the fire, and they get it under control till we got there and didn't penetrate the building. Every one of those businesses required by code to have a fire extinguisher. The problem is they don't know it because we're not out there telling them these things and enforcing our codes. Fortunately, that building is okay. You know, they got back to business the next day, they lost some inventory, and no one was hurt. And if I can find one more. We've got a picture of a business within, or a building within the community. Nice landscape, everything looks good. Except I got a complaint at this building about their fire alarm system or their suppression system not being serviced. And as I walked around looking to see if they even had one, all the components were hidden. If you see here, we've got a horn stroll, this is what alerts the fire department when an alarm goes off. This box underneath, there is a Knox box, we have special keys that we use to access the building. And that item you see hidden back there, the round item with the chain hanging off, it is our fire department connection. That's what we hook up our fire hose to, to supplement the sprinkler system while we go in and extinguish the fire. Unfortunately, you can't see any of these components because they've landscaped over them. The only other problem with this one is, the gentleman that called and made the complaint was right. Here's the inspection tag, there was inspection in 2005, this system was inspected again in '06, and again in '17. It's an annual inspection requirement by code. That being said, we're finding some fair violations within the community, and there's a definite need to rectify that. You know, there's, from my estimation, about 850 separate inspectable occupancies. And when I say that, I mean you'll have a building, say, 345 whatever street. There'll be four different businesses in there, so that'll be four different inspectable occupancies. I estimate we can get to about 300 a year once we get a system up and running with a full-time inspector. You know, there's going to be some legwork up front, they're going to have to, our inspector, if we're able to get a full-time person, that person's going to have to go out and verify addresses because our list isn't as good as it could be. Once we get on a regular cycle, you know, there'll be some businesses that are much more hazardous, that we'll need to look at every year. But for the most part, I think, if we're visiting our businesses every three years, we can make them much more fire safe. In the memo I drafted, I had a number of different ways we could do this. You know, fire fund balance, our budget's pretty tight, but, you know, if we were to just fund it through the fire fund, we'd probably tap into a fund balance, but that's a finite number, and, you know, we're below the township's recommended funded balance level as it is. The general fund could pay it, but the general fund has bills and have the same problem. You know, we looked at various options, I've got a grant out to see if we could fund the position for two years. That's one more option. And another option that some of our neighbors use is a fee schedule for businesses. I bring this all to you tonight to see what the appetite is for correcting these problems and have a discussion with the board about which avenues you'd like me to bring more information back so that we can find a way to fund this responsibly and get these issues handled within the community.
Thank you, are there comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Noel.
Well, I was on the board previously when Jack Germain was our inspector. And he was very well-received in the community. People liked him, he deserved, kind of as a community liaison in many ways. I don't remember why they, the position, feeling the position was discussed, and I don't remember why it wasn't filled. Can you provide any insight into that, Andy?
Unfortunately, I cannot, that was well before my time here. I have actually spoken with Mr. Germain once, he called up as I was new in the department, and was curious as to what inspection work had been done since he'd left. And unfortunately, I had to tell him none. But yeah, he expresses the same concern, that he wished someone to be in that role and able to be doing that work.
Trustee Vogel.
So thank you, it was helpful to understand all of that. Awarenesses in my mind are, we've got a number of staffing needs at the township right now. And we need to be looking at them holistically, especially relevant relative to the general fund. My gut feel is that, it's interesting to hear that there are various sort of revenue possibilities. I think the fee structure impresses me as a bit of a no-brainer. Service provided to the community, some kind of fee structure that's appropriate to the service provided. Questions in my mind, since it sounds like this is just kind of testing the water right now. Is it full-time, is it part-time, is it something we ramp up over a year, two, or three? Is it a combination of some grant funding to get started, a fee structure to sort of transition that, a progression toward full-time? But I think we need to be looking to within the fire department budget to be able to pull this off. Just some initial thoughts.
Trustee Cartel.
Thank you, again, it was very useful for you to show those very concrete examples, and I appreciate your attention and thoughtful approach. I am curious, I know you're very early in thinking through what exactly that fee structure might look like, but can you give us an idea of ballpark figures or what other municipalities near us are using so that we can understand what that impact might be on businesses?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, in particular, one larger neighbor that uses a fee structure, and after I spoke with them, they use a square footage-based calculation. You know, six or seven cents per square foot for certain sized building, and four and a half for smaller buildings. And I've kind of plugged some of those numbers into a few businesses within the community. As an example, McDonald's on Baker, every three years might get a bill for about $125 at one aspect. Meyer being a larger building, we'd have a lower number for them, might be about 3,000 every three years. I don't know if that helps, I do have some preliminary work done on that, I'd be happy to bring that back to the board or share that.
Thank you, well, I do know that we are thinking about that for fire, for sewer, of course, and also in the planning commission, just really trying to make sure that our fee structure for the services that we provide is covering the cost. So it's really helpful to hear what those fees might look like, and I appreciate the sliding scale by the square footage, that makes a lot of sense.
Trustee Jerome.
My first question is for Kathy, how did we pay for Mr. Germain previously?
I was just asking myself that question.
Seriously, what did you tell yourself?
I don't remember, I do not remember.
I can't remember either.
So we can find that, though.
Yes.
Are there other examples of municipalities?
Right.
In other structures that they use? Or is this something configured, the four options that you've given us, is this unique to... I mean, there has to be other local townships that have different configurations, what do they do to support?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I think...
I don't know if that's...
I'm sorry.
I don't know if that's so much a question to answer right now, but what I think we're doing is providing some initial feedback. I think the benchmarking of other communities, the fee structure that could cover this, what a ramp-up could look like moving into, toward a full-time position. Is there a contract basis as an option for hiring someone? I think our goal is to give you questions to go off and think about rather than address each one. And Alec, my apologies, I interrupted you.
Actually, I think you interrupted the chief, but...
Sorry, well, apologies.
You're looking at different models.
Yes.
Okay. My only other comment would be that, you know, for instance, with the two that you demonstrated, you know, I would like to see a fee that is fair to a commercial business, but I'd also like to see those people that are in violation and clearly have, they know that they're in violation of it because planting's in front of the horn strobe is not legal, and they should know that there should be an additional fee structure to account for the fact that they're deficient in meeting the requirements of the fire code.
So I will say, we do have that in place already.
Okay.
We have a fee scheduled for repeat re-inspections. So as an example, if we go out to a business and say, hey, we found this violation, and they work to correct it, and we come back and do a re-inspection, we do that for free because, you know, we're coming back to check on them. And they've got everything completed, we sign off, say, have a great day. We come back to the next business, who says, oh, no, you know, I didn't bother, I'm just, you know, I'm going to wait on doing that. And we can say, well, no, actually, we're going to come back in another two weeks. And if it's not corrected, we have a fee structure and you're going to get a fee. And that fee escalates as an attempt to entice folks to correct their deficiencies.
I guess I would, if they were deficient, I would assume that the re-inspection would be a cost that they would bear because you're having to go back to check if they did what they're supposed to have done anyway. But nevertheless, thank you for that clarification.
Are there other comments or questions for the chief? Trustee Cartel.
Thank you, I just wanted to follow up a little bit briefly on your discussion of whether it might make sense to train to have the inspector also service an assistant fire chief so that there would be somebody in line to take over as needed. Could you just help us understand your perspectives on that a little bit more, please, or just summarize that?
Sure, so it's really two different roles that an inspector could play. One, in a large community, would just be fire inspector, that would be a person whose sole responsibility is inspection. They would typically report to a fire marshal who was at a chief level. But, you know, being that we're smaller, I don't know that we have the budget or the need for two people in an inspection position now. So I would, if the board would like to go ahead with something, would suggest that it be at an assistant chief level, that actually provides two services. In my absence, we have a command officer who's able to make decisions and clear lines of authority. Whereas if we don't, if, for example, I'm out of town and we don't have an assistant chief available, it falls to our shift personnel to make the bigger decisions. They're fine running the scenes, but there's some instances where we definitely would want to have a chief officer there to lend some authority to a scene or an incident or an issue that needs to be addressed. Also, it quite honestly, selfishly, gave me some, a little more room to breathe. You know, Doug Armstrong's our assistant chief, but he's part-time. And, you know, it's tough, he works, and I want to go out of town, do some things myself, and I want someone that I can work out a schedule with to say, hey, look, I'm out of town, you're in, and vice versa. So that we always have for our firefighters, a chief-level officer available.
So you think that the two positions could be combined, then, that the fire inspector could also be serving as assistant chief?
Yes, I believe that's, yes.
Thank you.
The difference, if I could, just to make sure I understand, the difference in the, in your memo, the difference in cost is really about, what, $6,000, $7,000?
Yeah, I threw together some cost estimates based on comparables and what our firefighter's contract looks like. An assistant chief would be an exempt position, so there'd be no overtime, same as there is with me. However, if there's a fire inspector that we delegate this to, my expectation is that the union bargained for the position. So I estimated a salary range for that, and then also that would be an overtime position, so when that person does get called in for a fire or other incident, they would be getting paid overtime. So there's a couple thousand dollars in overtime, I would estimate.
Is the overtime reflected in these?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Oh, I see, yes, and there's no, okay.
And again, these are estimates, just me kind of ballparking, looking at our contract, looking at neighboring communities and where everything flies, so obviously, anything's subject to negotiations. It's just ballpark numbers, I wanted the board to see some realistic numbers, you know, what something like this might cost.
Trustee Vogel.
Interesting to be reminded that we've got a part-time assistant chief, could you envision this as a part-time position also?
Quite honestly.
At least initially as rampant to something.
I think that's what we're starting to dug on right now. You know, I've actually got, he's out of town this week, it's his family's vacation, and I got about three things we're sitting on that we've got to take a look at when he gets back. So he is also starting to compile our list of addresses and review inspectable properties. We do have some money in the part-time budget to get him going on this, but I definitely see the need as a full-time position. Like I said, we've got enough work, it's going to take a person in that position three years to get through every building within the community, I anticipate, for the initial run. And then after that, we're working on a cycle, try to hit every building every three years.
There comments? Trustee Noel.
Well, it clearly sounds like there is a need, and I am definitely supportive of doing this. And as I'm trying to reflect back with Jack Germain, I think that time period was during the time period before we had the millage. So I'm thinking the funding came out of the township general fund, but I'm not positive. Donna, what do you think about that?
Well, we did pay for the fire department out of the general fund before the millage.
What year did that end?
The millage is up for renewal in a couple of years, isn't it?
I believe the township passed a 10-year millage just before I started.
Okay, but what year, when did we stop paying for the fire department out of the general fund?
When the millage was passed.
Do you remember when that was?
Well, we renewed, and it was initially 10 years, so you just started.
Okay.
I believe the township just passed one in '19.
Okay, so let's go back 10 years, so maybe 2009, 2008 is when the initial, when the people voted for the millage, and then they, that established the fire department's funding. So 2008, 2009?
I think it would have been then, because I was on the board, 2004 to 2008. So it was just as I was leaving, yeah.
That Jack retired?
Yes. Okay.
That seems consistent with our records, I don't see really anything after the '07, '08 time period in our files for inspections.
Well, I think we're all in favor of it, so.
Now you have some more homework to do.
Sure, yeah. If we could draw this to a conclusion, I think you probably have enough feedback to move forward.
Sure.
All right. And I don't think we generally entertain comments on discussion items, is that, am I remembering correct?
Yes.
In that case, let's move on to item...
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Move on to item J3, which is possible action on the Marshall Park improvements. And we have with us, yes, please have a seat, Andy, Andy Turner, the Chair of the Parks Advisory Board. Would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, hopefully the Board of Trustees was able to read the agenda packet that had the materials in there. There's a, I don't know if you have the ability to share the agenda packet on the screen, like where those materials are?
I don't know, if anyone at home, if any of our trustees at home have that on the screen, I don't have it up there.
I think we'll be fine without it, but basically, Marshall Park, one of the South Township's newest parks that's starting to take shape, is seeking a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to hire Washington Engineering to be a project manager consultant for the construction of one or more pavilions at that site. And so in the agenda packet, hopefully everybody's able to see... And so in the agenda packet, hopefully, everybody's able to see, this goes all the way back to the Parks Master Plan, that this has been part of the goal structure for this space. And then also, most recently, this winter, we created a narrative that is associated with a budget. And so this request fits comfortably in our budget for this year as well. And so more specifically, it would hire Washtenaw Engineering, Joe Maynard, who's been a strategic partner with our initiatives with Parks in the last, you know, 15 months, in the amount of $12,750. And that would start the process. There are still a lot of decisions to be made in terms of design and location of these pavilions. And a unique element to this is that he has access to reclaimed barn wood, which would provide some really unique, authentic SiO barn material for these pavilions. And so that's a unique element of this proposal.
Are there questions or comments? Trustee Jerome?
Well, I'd just like to support Andy's comments. One of the reasons that we are encouraged by Mr. Maynard, we did get a competitive bid as well that we were working with, was his ability to, and he's done some of the work at some of the other parking lots, but sort of his ability to survey and incorporate all the processes that are required for the development of the park, as well as he does have some additional barn potential that we're looking at, which would fit, I think, very well into our sustainability narrative and actually being adaptively reusing materials from a barn that's gonna be taken down and incorporating them into a structure rather than getting new materials for it, per se. So as the Parks Group works to flush out the opportunities for Marshall Road and other Township parcels, I think this is a great step forward in really enabling us to let people park and get their first shot of experiencing some of these parks that we've worked so hard to acquire and then develop.
Other trustees? Trustee Corto?
I really appreciate that reuse of materials, both in terms of sustainability and also aesthetics, and in keeping with their sort of rural farm-like landscape. So kudos to you and to the engineer, to Maynard's engineering folks, to come up with that idea. Just to, just as a reminder, this is fully paid for out of the Parks Millage, correct? And I wonder if you have an idea of, is this approach going to be used at other parks and with comparable costs? Or just, just looking at the lay of the land of your budget for the next few years, you're comfortable that this is fitting within the budget that you can then use on your other park projects?
Do you wanna respond to that, Andy?
Sure, yes. I think that pavilions could, this concept will be a good template. This is, you know, we're new. And so this, this concept would be a nice template moving forward. I'm sure that, you know, with some of the governance reform possibly within the Township, you know, there might be different ways to manage builds and seek bids and things of that nature. But I think that in terms of cost projection, Joe has projected that each pavilion would be roughly $15,000, just so we have full disclosure of what we're getting into. And so, but yeah, to answer Trustee Corto's question, I think that we'll continue to have a place in the, in the Parks Millage budget, that we can seek these opportunities and continue to advance our initiatives with Parks and Preserves.
Trustee Vogel?
So Andy, I support this, as you know, also. I could pull it up on screen if it's helpful. It's a, it's a great deal of the barn you'll be pulling material from. I thought that I read a cost figure of $100,000, which seemed a little high for what this pavilion, and now I hear you say 15. What is the, so the engineering, it sounds like it's about $12,000. What's the cost of getting the structure constructed?
Well, it'll be bid out by Joe, by Washtenaw Engineering.
Yeah.
And the, the projection is $15,000 per pavilion.
Oh, good, so I did miss that.
And I didn't mean it to be a source of confusion, that was in our, in our PAB slideshow, but that was the overall budget that we have for consultant and contractor. So it fits comfortably with what we have budgeted.
Oh, I see.
For this year, for the, for the fiscal year ending, you know, 2022. That by no means is what we project for this. That, that was our overall budget.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. I, I see exactly what you're saying. All right, and then, and again, we've all been talking about this for a long time, just taking on that challenge of finding some matching funds for the millage funds. Is there any potential for that in this project? Whether it's a small grant, I mean, this is, this is small enough, it might not be relevant, but I really wanna hold us accountable to that challenge of matching the Park and Pathway Millage Funds with outside dollars, so we really stretch those millage dollars. Yeah, any possibility you might be seeing?
You know, I wouldn't rule it out. I, I couldn't say with a guarantee that we would, a grant would be involved with this build. But I mean, as these gentlemen know, I mean, we, we're actively seeking grants, and we've sought grants before and had them approved, and that's always part of our goal structure. Whether it happens with this build, I mean, I, I think we'll seek it out, but it's certainly no guarantee. But I agree with you, Trustee Vogel, about trying to seek grants and leverage our, our millage money as best we can.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive of this. I think it's very smart that it's Marshall Park, which is a gateway to the pathway. Zebra Pathway is moving north, it's making progress, and this is a great launching pad.
Yeah, it's very, it's very complimentary to the, to the Zebra initiative.
Yeah, 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 it's just great thinking, great synergy, which is just what we need to be about.
Yeah, and to complement Andy's answer with regards to the grant funding, I think we discussed this offline as well. Obviously, TAP, which you're familiar with, has also sought some of the similar grants, and the funding mechanisms have some similarities there between the groups. So it, you know, everyone has a responsibility to try and seek additional funds, but there is going to be, and this is why we need an individual that can help coordinate those asks more effectively, so that we can leverage the asks across the different funding opportunities and maximize that ability to garner funds for the Township.
I really support that.
Other comments from trustees? Are there comments from the public? I do not see any. In that case, would someone like to make the model motion? So moved, moved by Jerome. Support by Corto. And this is to authorize up to $12,750 in funds budgeted for Parks and Preserves for the Marshall Park Engineering Construction Documents and Construction Oversight Services Agreement between SiO Township and Washtenaw Engineering Company dated June 16, 2021. Please call a roll.
If I, if I may, it should be noted that Joe Maynard, there's a revised version, July 7th, that.
Oh.
So just for, I think for clarity, that should be noted.
Okay, is, is that a different amount, or?
It had, it had other elements that we, as the PAB, did not approve or desire, so.
How did I get the different date here? So the cost structure remains the same, but there were certain?
Everything's accurate, I just.
There was a proposal that had some alternate fund, under, alternate pieces of a proposal that we're not pursuing at this time. This is only for one, fast enough that while we develop the plans for the other components.
Okay, so we shouldn't cite the June, like 16?
I would cite July 7th, then if I may, I could give, this is a hard copy that you can have.
Sure.
And it's in your, yeah, and you have it, you have it, but.
Well, then, before we call the roll, perhaps we should amend the model motion to state that the date of the agreement is July 7, 2021.
Yes, sir.
I'm fine with that friendly amendment.
Okay, and I believe, Trustee Corto, you were the second, are you also comfortable with the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, are we ready to call the roll on the motion as amended? What, are you ready to call the roll? Please go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, congratulations, Andy, in Parks.
The next item is also Parks item. This is item J4. This is an item on improvements to the Sloan Preserve. So Andy, please go ahead and introduce this item.
All right, yes, so this was part of the agenda packet, so the, what really inspired this is that we have our new entry signs, and we have a new entry sign for the Sloan Preserve. And so the Sloan Preserve is located on Baker Road and has been available to the public since, I wanna say, 2013. And so the basics of this are to remove some old fencing material that's along Baker Road there, clear down some of the brush and trees that really, if you've ever tried to exit that parking lot, the sightlines are not real safe. And, and we just felt, the PAB felt that it would look much more welcoming by clearing the north and the south side of that entryway. And it'll help security, because then the parking lot will be completely visible from Baker Road. And, and then it also allows the entry sign to have the proper setback, the, from Baker Road. And it'll, this will also eliminate the existing sign, which is pretty much served its purpose and is located pretty close to Baker Road. And then also, this contractor is the one that did our parking lots this year for some of our new properties. And so part of this proposal is to refresh the gravel and stone, which is in great need there, and then also do some other basic removal of some of the trees and things of that nature that are invading the conifers. And, and that's the basic components of this proposal for $6,000, Freer Forestry.
All right, are there questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Corto?
I am concerned about the proposal to use a preventative spray on the lot to reduce weeds growing in the park area. I know many of their residents have expressed concerns about the use of herbicides by the Washtenaw County Road Commission. And given that this is a park and a natural area, the use of spray seems unwarranted. I believe there should be physical barrier options to use instead of a spray. And I wonder if we could go back to the contractor about that.
For sure, I think we can seek some, maybe some natural alternatives or just not do it, because it's not a new build. I mean, the underlayment's already there, so this would be just basically the parking lot only to, to maintain and eliminate weed growth and then put the new gravel on top. I think that was the contractor's intentions, but we're, we're certainly, the fact that it is a nature preserve, we're certainly respectful of that, and that can easily be eliminated, or we can find an alternative, you know, a more natural alternative than an herbicide to keep weed growth out of the parking lot.
I mean, I wonder whether that's going to affect the price point? Or do you think that's something that could be done with a contract modification without changing the overall price?
No, if anything, it would, it would, it would reduce the, the cost. It would just be one less thing. We have a, we have a strong volunteer group, we can pull the weeds, or, you know, we'll, we'll find an alternative. But I certainly, and I'm very respectful of that, of Trustee Corto's observation there. And we, we can certainly, we don't wanna let that, you know, minimize all the, or, you know, not let all the other good things happen. So we'll, we'll find a remedy that's, doesn't use herbicides.
Doesn't even seem to be a cost item in the, in the bid.
Right. Yeah, if, you know, the, the fact that, that there can't be an underlayment, you know, I mean, the parking lot's already there, so some of those techniques that you would use to avoid, but we'll, we'll get it figured out and not use herbicides.
There's also an actual herbicide, so you can use the.
Vinegar, yeah, there's all sorts of.
And salt water.
Yep, yep.
All four of them, so. Any other comments or questions from the members of the Board of Trustees? Any comments from the public?
No comment.
In that case, would someone like to make the model motion? So moved by Jerome. Support by Vogel. This is to authorize the expenditure of up to $6,000 for work at the Sloan Preserve by Freer Forestry, as described in the Land Renovation and Parking Lot Restoration Proposal dated June 30, 2021, with the understanding that the herbicide spraying of the parking lot will not be included. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yeah.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thanks, Andy.
Yep, thank you.
The next item is item J5. This is possible action on the Wolverine Pickleball Conditional Use. That's CU number 20003. And, oh, we have the applicants here. Well, thank you for waiting. And, well, why don't you go ahead and introduce this agenda item then? And introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Kristy Houghton, I'm one of the owners of Wolverine Pickleball, seeking the conditional use.
And I'm Charlie Kahn with Swisher Commercial, representing the applicants, Jod House-Depler and Bill Taylor.
Great. And this is a conditional use for an indoor recreation facility to be located at 119 Jackson Industrial Drive.
Correct.
And this has been through the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional land use, subject to a list of conditions, which are in the meeting packet. And our, my understanding, our understanding is that the, all of the conditions have been met at this point.
That is correct. Are there questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees?
Right beside.
Oh, sorry. I have to look in two different directions. Trustee Jerome?
I just wanna say that I'm in support of this effort, and that I don't actually have, I don't play tennis, I play pickleball, and that's what created this. I love the game, it's a great time, and I'm very supportive of this in South Township. There you go, there's your plug.
I love it.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Are there comments or questions from the public?
Jackie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Jackie, sorry, sorry. Trustee Corto?
Thank you. So the Planning Commission was enthusiastic about this proposal as well. We think it's a great use for the site. I did just have one quick question, and I know the applicants have addressed many of the concerns, there were some parking issues, some layout issues. I did notice in Mr. Luan's review that there was still concern about a retail component. Could you just explain how that was resolved?
I didn't notice that there was anything other than him stating that there's a certain amount of floor space which could only be used for retail. And since the current use is a very, very small little room that they have supplies for the pickleball game, that's pretty much the component of any retail.
I see, okay, thank you. That's, I, I just didn't quite understand that in his memo, I appreciate that clarification.
Yep. Trustee Vogel?
I want to express support for this also. I think it is a great add to SiO Township, and I am looking forward to playing.
Any other comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment?
No comment.
None, okay. Is there someone who would like to make a model motion?
I won't.
All right. Move by Vogel, support by Jerome. This is motion that the Township Board of Trustees approve, I assume, based on everyone's comments. CU number 20003, Wolverine Pickleball, conditional land use for an indoor recreation facility based on conformance with the conditional use standards outlined in section 36-244 of the zoning ordinance. Please call the roll.
Pathway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us to the item that was removed from the consent agenda for request, and this is to set public hearings, let me see, I should probably switch this back here, to set public hearings for the four special assessment district road projects. That's Daleview Drive, Merlin Way, Wagner Ridge Court, and Westview Way slash Southwood Court. And, given that, I believe it was you, trustee Noel, who asked to move this from the consent agenda, would you like to speak to your reasoning for doing so?
Sure. I had questions about whether we had seen enough materials. There were no materials in our packet, and then David Reed raised the issues of the notice provision requiring 30 days, so maybe you could address that, and has Jim Fink reviewed all of this for action tonight?
Well, my understanding is that what we were doing tonight is simply setting the dates for the public hearing, and that the, you know, assembly of the language for the notice and so on occurs on a schedule, and in fact, we used the schedule that Fran Zuma prepared, and sort of counted backwards from the date, and looked at when we had regular meetings scheduled. This was the first one that seemed like a reasonable one, from which to work backward with enough advanced notice. So I'm not sure, you know, whether there was a practice for doing sort of an extra margin of notice, but the reason for putting these on, for setting the dates, was to make sure that we were doing so in a public way. The actual sort of publication of the notices and so on would occur subsequently, but on the timeline that would meet all of the legal requirements. And obviously, anything that, before we publish it, would be reviewed by the township attorney.
But once we set the date, doesn't that put the calendar kind of into a cycle? Like, once we actually set the hearing date, are there things that we should have had done before then, like the information that David Reed was referring to, and more information? We don't have any information in our packet here tonight.
Well, all we're doing tonight would be setting the dates, sort of announcing that we're going to hold the public hearings. The official notice of the public hearings would include much more information, and that's, but that's not due yet. If people are more comfortable, I guess, you know, waiting and pushing out the date for the public hearing to the second meeting in August, I don't know that that makes a huge difference. And if there's any, if there's concerns at all, you know, let's do that. Let's put it off. So we would, instead, we'd put this back on the agenda to set the public hearing dates at our next meeting. Presumably, that would still give us the same schedule of time for doing all of the public notices and complying with the legal requirements, but we would just be doing it for whatever the second meeting, whatever the date of the second meeting is in August.
I would be more comfortable with that, and I just, I want to hear the opinion of our township attorney. Is this, I mean, I wanted to hear his opinion on this, he's not here tonight.
No, he asked if we needed him, and I said I did not think so, and I don't think this is so urgent that, you know, it would have merited keeping him for this point in meeting anyway. So why don't we seek an opinion from the township attorney, just to, you know, confirm that we're doing everything according to the schedule, and this will give us more time to get more information. And I don't think that the additional couple of weeks is going to make a huge difference in terms of the construction schedule. These are all going to be done sort of at the end of the construction cycle anyway. So I don't anticipate that it will make a tremendous difference.
I believe if you pull that out of consent to action, you'll need a motion to table. Is that what you're suggesting, Kathy?
Yes, so I'm willing to make the motion to table.
So we have a motion to table by Noel. Is there support? Support by Corteau, and motion to table is not open to discussion. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to, I believe, to public comment. So this is a time for the members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any manner under the purview of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, and I would like to add just one comment for clarification. It is not the intent of this board, or anyone on the board, to silence anyone from the public. The concern with public comment was with regards to capturing public comment in 13 to 15 words, and that that was probably inadequate and inaccurate, and so I agree with trustee Noel, we're going to have to have some discussions on how that's actually captured. But everyone is allotted their three minutes, and I will try to be, get this going. Pam? Pam Boyd?
Good evening. Pam Boyd, 517 Linden Lane. I would have liked to have asked Chief Hood this question. Are there principalities that have a model where the income from the inspections pays for the position? Think in terms of private business model that would make sense to this position so that it actually pays for itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Rob Pattinson.
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, 500 North Z. I think it is a mistake to move public comment for items not on the agenda to the end of the meeting, for two reasons. First, it gives the appearance of the Board of Trustees not being interested in what the public has to say. Second, more people are in attendance at the beginning of the meeting, and it gives more people a chance to hear the concerns of their fellow residents. The perfect example of this is when Pam Boyd was able to alert the community that there was an attempted child abduction in our neighborhood within 300 or 400 yards of our home, and we certainly appreciated being able to hear that from a member of the public. And, second, we got three things total. Second, I'd like to bring your attention to the fact that the two written reports from trustees Corteau and Jerome on the June 22 Board of Trustees meeting are missing from the minutes in tonight's 301-page agenda packet. Third, I think the issue of the fire inspector is a critical public safety issue, as well as a critical safety issue for the firemen that go to serve these, service the community when needed. If we have gone several years with minimal inspections, and it will take at least three years for a full-time inspector to catch up, that is very alarming. I hope that the Board of Trustees will support the fire chief in funding and finding a solution for this as soon as possible by making this a very high priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not see any. Thank you. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Vogel, support by Corteau. Please call a roll.
Pathway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel, yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
The township as a whole apologizes for the, or, I'll do it for the township as a whole, apologizes for the inconsistencies with our new electronic format. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll have ironed out some of these issues so that we can start promptly at 7 o'clock, so apologies for...
A late start.
A late start.
Okay, thanks, everyone.